Wait, so we are going to rise and have a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you. Okay, at my own peril, getting the control of the meeting back, I'm going to turn everything over to Chief Scott Drew, Sheriff Sean Becker, and it's good to see all you folks here. At least they have a heartwarming thing like this in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. As he said, I'm Scott Drew with the Fort Rivers Police Department, Sean Becker, here with the County Sheriff's Department. Again, it's not very often that you get a chance to do something where I could just like this. And so today, we are honoring three of our citizens due to an incident that happened on March 7. And during that incident, the communication center received a call about a dog that had went into the water, into the water at Nepali. So while the crews were assembling, fire departments, police departments were in routh and planning our attack. We learned that a human. And we had this massive response. I listed the agencies, so I didn't forget anybody. County Sheriff's Department, Wisconsin Rapids Fire and Ambulance, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, the Redford Fire Department, responders, along with the Redford Police Department, all responded to the scene. And being responders there, for acting as the the citizens that are here tonight had already taken lifesaving measures to save our community. Because of their behavior. No, I mean, we really had to just, I mean, off the link. So it's just so heartfelt to see citizens acting, seeing, and doing. It's just in this profession that is so, so, so narrowly sought that we wanted to take the opportunity to thank these citizens. So it is our honor, Sheriff Becker, and I, to present lifesaving awards to Brenda Kepel. If you want to come forward, as we call you, Tony, you can come up right away as well, Tony Kepel. And Bill, without their actions that day, I'm quite confident that our outcome would have been okay. So we've got a couple of items here for you. Give credit to the sheriff and his assistant, Aquanellus, chief deputy, that had these made out. Again, it's just a small token of our appreciation for the Yeah, and just how God put you in that place that day. Yes, and that's another thing. If you guys would like to go outside, the sheriff's house, if your family wants to take some pictures and stuff. And again, we'll let them do that.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down and appreciate your service.
The Chair Leonard Tatum motion sent the agenda, meeting minutes, 14 March 2023. Privategulled second by Mansell, committee discussion. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Close the vote. Public comments on agenda item. Do you have any questions to speak? All I have to simply say is, it's the next two years coming up on the village board. I enjoyed my six years. Three of you have all six years, one six years. Just want to thank you guys. Sorry. So I just wanted to say thank you. And after that, we move on to the committee reports. First one's the airport petition, and then I have to talk about on that. Already. See Chairman Stewart's here.
Sure, we back.
So long, I have that same problem. Thanks again. Thanks. Chairman Radke, public works, please.
We met on March 22nd. Just an update, we're well within budget from the snow plowing, so that was good news. The village crew's busy filling potholes, picking up brush. Speaking of streets, as you can see. The other thing is, you'll see a motion later on, we talked about the trees and possibly getting a grant, we'll see that later. Other than that, everything as well. Any questions?
Okay, moving on, Chairman Mansell, Park and Market.
So then March 22nd. We talked about, there's a Woodcunning Leadership Project for a mural. We get like a whole lot besides just the introduction to it. They'd like to sponsor, this group would like to sponsor a mural on the end of the village building on Market Avenue. It's an emergency response. Available. Discussion about, and this is what we talked about last month's meeting, Port Road Bike Walking Trail Extension.
So the part of the village network includes a extension of our existing bike trail, counter bunker. Addition to the beginning here. And tied to that, redo surfacing from step three. Needing to make some movement as a village to show that, show a sincere effort on our part that there will be a bike trail. We've gotten $10,000 grant, we haven't gotten it, we can get it when I go through the seed committee next two weeks and say, issue it out, it's been awarded, not issue it till you present them, that you'd rather receive from. So once we receive that $10,000, because of the short time to get a contract engineering done for that project, we want to get this motion, reapproval for me also, assuming that it's possible to engineer this part. And this, send it to DOT and get it.
That I will make a motion to spend the $10,000 of the funding for phase one of the bike trail extension. This was unforced forecast revenue in this and unforced expense from the
One more second. Phase one is kind of
So I think, check the phases altogether, and it was a total of
Well, and that's part of the engineering. Initial engineering, just for the engineering work, was $10,000. That was designing an entire, like, tree area. Addition to what we have. So this $10,000 was going to get us some engineering, so, but, but anyway. It's two significant areas, two strip intersections. This is phase one. All these are just stop, we're running this.
So portion of having, because it's $10,000, it means we're going to download traffic. Now, it's $50,000 for those funds.
Discussion we had, almost, the discussion we had is, phase one was solely tied to getting something done for the DOT grant. DOT project. If you miss that opportunity, then you're going to have a number forty thousand. So phase one takes us to a spot where there actually is a bike trail start. And then you could actually drive on the road. Phase two and phase three would be discussions in either FCH or PFC. Throughout the year, you tie for legacy, art funding, other grants from the seed committee. So the money is there, but we got to show some
Derek, if I can comment on that, I had, I had concerns on that also. And I think, like Boz has said, basically it's showing that we're going to start the project and hopefully if we have the funding in the future, go with further phases of it. But the biggest thing was, if we show initiative that we started it, the DOT would put signages, I guess, like flashing lights and would do that, otherwise they won't even do that in the process. Is that, if that's correct?
All those in favor of the motion? Both?
Then the that whole, he talked about the the media calendar, a paper which was published, and then jurors gave us the same update about the trees that Asher purposes.
Okey dokey, Chairman Sailor Pitts.
We held our last meeting April 6th. It ended up being a short meeting, the earlier than we might have things to cover, the police department. Really did not, really did have two issues. Obviously, going into the future. It feels like there needs to be more concentration on trying to prepare for the natural and along with that, the ability of um, to squad and survive, still being outfits. Um, that's really it. Revert, you know, reviewed the budget and updated us on the progress of the he also had correspondence that was presented, and I'll mention that a little bit later. Didn't really have time in the meeting to go into that, well, he had a trust. That's correspondence included. Um, under old business, we talked about the bylaws. There is now a draft ready for the micro department to consider and comment on. I think that's going to be due no later than May 10. And anybody who wants to read it, looks like so. It has had comments added by public safety, by committee, by the administrator, by PFC, and also by input into it. Um, let's see, yeah, under, there was quite a discussion near the end of our sort. Correspondence came from our chief and from Justin. Explained his reasoning, remember? Tom, Tom Bartlett, a former chief, and I forget how many years he was chief, but a long time. And he makes a comment, as you would guess, and I haven't really mentioned that yet, the topic for most of this has to do with the Athletic Association, the Fort Rivers Fire and whether it can be audited. And we have now moved forward to follow our ordinance, which is that it does need to be reported on, it's 501-3C, they have a non-profit. Will be happening into the future. So we would ask that both a village auditor and our lawyer together in the same room when they're discussing administrator boss, who also explained that there's no discipline of action on the fire chief at the time. Steve Rager commented that 501-3C is being that's really, that was our, that was a long report on our village story.
Way out.
Well, may I ask a question? What was the ordinance?
I had something, I guess, maybe in, I don't know, to look in the answer, is there any grant here? I guess, just is there any grants available for positions of SRO or have been actually looking for grants at this point in time?
Yes, we, uh, we're set stage completion. It's a better grant. Good thing on our part is we don't have ones. But should be done here, tomorrow, that we're going with.
Hey Eric, I really think we know on March 29th. We talked about some of the chapter eight. Back, talk about chapter five. Task organization, I brought that back up, Paul, asking for have a discussion on getting this chief uh, was this new business, not only
study. They were kind of explaining different things going on, of it, personally. Or that that we that based on use of survey. You have to promote this should, I need to be zero, we have to, we have to stand to sit for the current quarter, $3,000, yes, I on Market Avenue.
What's the five man school?
Last one, last allowance. Now, I would just, I mean, I gave you the sheet, pull out there with details. Say that I talked ROI, got it. What I, you all need, we all understand, but for the public, there's a tangible that's not. Can't see it in the numbers. We, as a village, brought a parcel that was not of the code, goes in violation of our village, sat vacant for, hey, I can look around the table, you all tell me how it is. And once we took care of that, now we have a start point that knows the code. We have a business ordinance that enforces us to look at it, put the code, that done. Move mountains for the village to take care of that one parcel, we're going to do the same for the other parcels, get it back on the tax That's something you use in the ROI, not So over twenty thousand, that was conversion price. How we invested.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say to private say aye.
Aye.
So really, the, the last meeting of. More, more so focused on the lakes is pronounced. They had their first meeting yesterday. Till their annual election, uh, the village president. There, I'm, I'm the member. Uh decent meeting, but for this meeting, we specifically talked a little bit about the lake. Position, courses, roads, trash, village services. So uh we'll be putting together some data with our attorney for like this boundary agreement. And uh I'll present some information, not only to the residents, that committee, to the pit committee, next bit of the meeting. Where we kind of stand on the boundary. That does include public safety, fire services. Uh, everything else that we should be providing, starting thirty one.
Alrighty, uh.
So this was uh presented by the treasurer of the Athletic Association, came to us, uh, came to me last week. We had a short discussion about uh. Appropriate steps moving forward when it came to. If it's a association event compared to a firefighter event. How to do that appropriately, I said. Quest realization of the space to the village, that'll be up for vote, and then if the vote is, they will spot village. Support it, which. Will support these events, then uh me and that organization, like I do with all nonprofits, where anyone that asks us to use a shelter or this space or whatnot. We have a uh, an agreement we put together of that. Then I bring that back through the uh, or so either the full board or the pit committee, since the property discussion. For uh the final approval, these are kind of short fuse ones, because it's ones in May at the rum sale. Broth fry, one is. Time, the June street dance. Once we as a village approve the. Eight. Then that gives the Athletic Association ability to uh formally start doing their fundraising. That's why you'll see this type of events. Pull out specific Fort Edward Firefighter Athletic Association event. Uh, to make sure it's fully transparent, an agreement between two parties. We will get these one agendas moving forward, so we have a clear line of. Village does, what our department does, by the way. Okay, potential motion for you all to accept it as written. Once you accept it as written, then I will sit down with the head organization, we'll work out the specifics. Provo.
By granted. So. Discussion. Okay. By granted. Most favorite motion. Red. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business. Uh, new business. Alrighty, um, the unfinished business is my adjutant's meeting. Till. Meetings. Then on Tuesday, the new organization meeting.
Athletic guy.
Anyway, I, I just said that the thing that uh the. I'd just like to say again. Okay, before I.
Thank you all, actually. Gonna miss that. But, but I'm looking forward. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Except didn't much. Cheese for this last committee, and I appreciate except the last one. And that wasn't, that wasn't just you, so. Really been both. Your heart and your work ethic.
Well, Buzz, that's the last slide I could officially give you.
Got your report in there for April, uh, I wish he's on her. Get the drug test back from my three part timers this summer. It's uh, so they will be uh starting June, however, one, I believe it's graduated early, it's what I've told them. So that individual might start in May conference. Not as. Support and help. Of course, uh, we talked, uh. All that's there, we have our data there. Going to budget. Budget being on track, got our revenues coming in. Contract. Basically, we're, we're done, my level payroll review that was estimated. Uh, we'll be getting, uh, we presented it, I actually presented this to the league municipalities to pay a new gender conference ball. And uh, I had fifteen municipalities saying, hey, we're doing the same thing, send us what you got. So uh, it, they'll be providing me more information. Uh, Marathon County, South. So we'll continue to build that product, and I think the reason to take one. What I will do in the month of May is have a staff meeting with all the employees. And uh, we'll get more of a sense of the interest of the step program, otherwise. I'm in the receive mode from the FHR. Which ones? This product. Uh, the audit, uh, we had our auditor come in Monday, discussed the village audit, it's been completed, he sat down with me and I. And the same three issues that we as a village get every year, and continue to get, uh. There's a, you'll get hard copies of this next meeting. Right, there's a comment of separation of authority, because we have a president combo. Uh, you know, we have a different kind of money. And because we have one person that can control the entry of payroll for every department. Because we have one person that. Free for all the line items. Period. Perpetual, we have a rapid. We would have a payroll person for your public person. We would never get to that level. So you're gonna get that comment. Not a negative. So that's, that's been something that's been going on forever. Uh, the corrections of the ledger, because we as a village do not take our product at the end of the year. Give it to an outside agency, uh CPA. Let them clean up whatever language they think they need to clean up, and then it's presented to the auditor. Auditor has to do some of that, it's very minor stuff. Like move this money. Uh, because they have to do it, again, it's on state mandate. You know, the practices they have to mention. They were, they had to do some of the CPA type work. So they make a comment of that, uh, and then finally, because they as an auditor produce our annual village financial. Financial. They as the auditors, once they go through all the numbers, they provide the village financial report. We don't have a CPA on staff, uh, they again, they do it, so it's done annually. We're all good on it, they check all the blocks, uh, they have to make that comment, so these are three things that we will always get. The only way to avoid that is for us as a village to spend about a hundred, hundred thousand dollars. Don't think we need. Because there's nothing negative against village by getting these statements on. We were a larger community, there was federal fundings at some level. It, it could be a ding on. You're never gonna get to that level where we're asking for five, ten million dollars of federal. So uh, right now, the auditor's fine with it, he just asked. Uh, we talked about the Nepco Lake District. Now that'll be, that's a, that's not a village. Maybe. Standing board outside, but I will probably do, kind of like with their. Therefore, we're part. Uh, I'll ask the new president and the new board, uh, once we're seated. If you want me to include their minutes just for reference, from their board. Uh, we can do that, easy to do, so their meetings are held here, they get a spot. Meetings are uh, were members from us. Definitely, we have a vested interest in it. Continuing to work on our other parcels, two four one, two three one, over here, one forty. Roofing, plumbing, HVAC. And uh, now on the market for the middle section of two four one, larger section. Uh, that's part of our town. Strategic meeting, twenty two, April, Saturday, here. We will host our strategic meeting, that's the first meeting of the official board. We have some invited guests from the league, um, local stakeholders, Rapids, Grand Rapids, Saratoga, uh, County. It'll be here, plan is to start at nine. Sessions, and I'll get you the agenda. Sessions here, work sessions, workshop type discussions, it's a notice meeting, so. And then at noon, uh, we'll break for lunch, go next door, we'll support our local businesses. He will have about five or six things on the menu that we can, uh, that he'll have prepared for us. Uh, so it's not an à la carte menu, it's kind of expedite. Uh, so we'll preorder here, we'll walk over here, we'll start cooking. Over there, we'll sit, uh, sponsored by the village, we'll uh cover that, and come back here for the after. So that's the plan for the twenty second, not able to attend, even if you're able to attend for a short period of. How long. What we're discussing, it's most relevant. Saw the signs going up, we are, right now, I'm telling the guys to hold off on this sign, that sign, Village Hall, this, this location aren't good in that one. It, it's solely, uh, their focus now is on the leaves and stuff like that, we have signage. We have signs, we're sitting over there to shop, so when we get the, the three additional workers online, we get some bandwidth, and we'll put the last two signs up. So this grant's coming in for the vibrant spaces for downtown. We have Music Fest on the eighteenth, we have rum sale on the twentieth. Uh, I owe you a, a hard date, talk to the chief about it, we're gonna do a bike rodeo. Street dance, when? Fresh my mind. Date, street dance. So we'll capture that all in the calendar for summer for the uh. Parks. Uh, in your packet, it's basically, you have your waste management for last year, a quick snapshot. Uh, just so, pretty context, we pay about a hundred thirty thousand dollars a year for waste management purposes. They take away about, looks like about a hundred tons of trash in various categories. That's seventy percent increase from last year, the hundred tons, or ninety six ton. Uh, there's no cost change next year, there's no cost change this year, no cost change next year, with waste management, because we're locked in a contract. There will be a, almost positive, there would be a cost change in twenty twenty five. It's not only are they gonna cover the village in total, we get the Nepco Lake residents. Right now, Nepco Lake's next year under the contract, no additional charges. So the fifty or so actual residents we have over there, all under our contract, no additional charge. Uh, but we will uh definitely be incorporating their numbers into our twenty twenty five budget. Right now, there's probably a twenty five to forty thousand dollar increase for entire. And, and we'll refine days, probably gonna go into a two day window, we'll get a day. They'll get a separate. They'll get a separate. You have your water utility report, annual report that we send out to all residents, uh, by state law. No issues with our water or wells and so on. Uh. This is, these are the levels that we have to represent. We act, we actually have all the other stuff we record. Anyone ever ask, we can produce a report for all the other levels or contaminants, but by law, you're only supposed to highlight the ones that are. No issues with that. Your Earth Week memorandum came through, so any, uh, you know. Participation, it is. Other, I just included for the record, this was the formation of. Work. And we got to establish that word. Eric Hummel selected as well as another resident, mind. From the citizens. Rest of your president, who was like this county rep, I was like. Village rep. Third citizen was Domcar, uh, David Orcott. Sir. Fire metal officer. Here the interim board until the August, September timeframe, both. Two board. Seats, three new individuals. Seat for the village. County told them bodies to select. For. Questions. I know you don't have a vast audience, but you have some dedicated souls here. On behalf of the village, I want to recognize not only a good vice president for service. Uh, I wanna recommend this dude. For, uh, service to the village for multiple years, as not only a trustee, but a committee chairman as well as a president. And then finally, for El Presidente, then you guys. Uh. Ain't cigars, but he can use it for scars. Uh, if he ever entertains it, he always likes to have his own little gavel. Had to give him one, so for you being up for it, the president, sir, from the village. Thank you for your service for many years, your continued services for us. Speak now.
Item fourteen, committee meeting calendar, see a lot of DVD's on there, of course, that all. Then. Uh, do you have anything to say about next Tuesday or?
Um, I'm pretty much finalizing. The research. Friday.
Okay. Yeah.
What people do.
Likes to have an audience.
One of us does, one of us does.
Alright, we've got adjourned, my name is on there now.
I already changed it. Your time's over, my friend.
Being adjourned without objection. At nineteen fifty two hours. We're up.